It's Thursday, December 10th. It's 7:30. We'll call the Planning Board meeting to order.
It was a Freudian slip.
Freudian slip.
Mm-hmm.
There's going to be a change in the agenda. The presentation of the water conservation plan is going to be continued to another time. Becky apparently is not feeling well. So we're going to move up the Form A for Elm Park. And then the rest of it will remain the same. I need a motion to that effect.
So moved. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Having said that, the first item is the Form A for 7 and 11 Elm Park.
That's my, uh, attorney, Mike Hayes, 43 Frontage.
Can we move the, um, you don't have, no, don't, you don't move. Just move the microphone so that people can hear what you have to say.
Black is Mike.
The mic to Mike.
Attorney Mike Hayes, representing Lund Jensen, the owner of the property. The Form A plan divides the property in seeking to create two additional lots. They're both 50 footers. They both have twice the area. And that's about it. The house that was the, is retained on one lot. That house has a beautiful barn and a cottage, which the board previously this fall approved as an accessory dwelling. We went to the ZBA for their approval on the 50 footers and received that. So we'd be asking for this plan to be signed as a A and R plan.
Laura?
Um, it's a really beautiful piece of property. If you haven't seen it, it's worth driving by just to take a look at it. There is a question about whether Elm Park is public or private. The DPW was asked to make some repairs in the road because it was in really pretty tough shape. And they determined that it was not a public road and they didn't have any responsibility for it. There is some information that's old in the Planning Board files that suggests that maybe it is a public road. But my recommendation would be that you might want to take a step back and let the applicant get that sorted out before you endorse the plan. I have some pictures of the, of what the road looks like. It's, um... Thank you. Parts of it are, this part is about 10 feet wide. There are other parts that are maybe about, you know, it may widen up to about 16 feet. But it's, it's not paved, no drainage. I don't think we've had any correspondents from the fire department about what they would do as far as getting a vehicle in there, turning it around and getting it back out again, or, you know, getting it in and getting it down this gravel road. You know, maybe it's no problem for them, but it would be good to make sure that they knew about it. So those are just my thoughts on it.
Did we endorse the Form A?
You've endorsed at least two that I, I, from where I'm at. Number one, number two, there's no doubt in my mind, the town, and I've spent numerous times in town hall, numerous times in town hall, trying to see what the official determination of it is. There are plans in DPW that don't call it anything. There are other plans in DPW that call Elm Park a public way. I've done title research on the, some of the properties. There's no doubt in my mind that Elm Park is within the layout of Greenfield Lane. Elm Park is not listed anywhere as any type of street, private way, any type of way within the town. I am convinced Elm Park is part of the layout of Greenfield Lane. And that's one response. And then my other is that, you know, the board has previously determined that it meets the requirements under the 81L. So I'd be asking for the same thing.
Was the issue raised with the ZBA? Was the issue raised with the ZBA?
No. Well, the discussion was pretty similar to what I had just said. But the ZBA decision reflects that Elm Park, the frontage is on a public way.
I, I'm not saying that it is or it isn't. I'm just saying that where there's a big discrepancy about it, and the DPW in particular thinks that it's not a public way, it might be good for everybody to get it sorted out so that the people living there, if they're entitled to snow plowing and some maintenance, then they get that. If they're not entitled, then everybody knows that and it's absolutely clear. But just to get it sorted out one way or the other.
One thing...
Yeah, but plus the fact that it is gravel and we haven't heard from the fire department. I mean, those are some other issues.
Two things I can tell you is that the people who abut that public way paid to have that Elm Park portion of Greenfield Lane recreated this summer. They have been, since DPW's new snow plowing policy, have been paying to, to plow that in the winter. Again, you know, I think one of my, my opinion would be is that the, you know, it's, whether or not DPW wants to call it a public way or not, I think legally it is, number one. And number two, whether they want to plow it or not, the residents don't care right now. I think they have the right to insist that it be plowed and maintained by the town. But they do, all the residents want to keep that as a gravel portion of the, of the way. The other thing I just ask for your consideration is there is a, a closing for the house scheduled for Tuesday. And I would respectfully ask that you endorse the plan because that, that closing depends upon this A and R plan being filed.
I have a question since I'm not that familiar. Well, I'm familiar with Greenfield Lane, but not Elm Park. So it just basically comes off, it's like a little loop?
It's a little loop, yep.
So what this picture is part, this is the loop, basically? Kind of what?
To the left...
I can show you where that was taken.
Yeah, Greenfield, I would assume Greenfield Lane is to the left of that and it's that beautiful park, green area.
Greenfield Lane is to the right of it.
Okay. And so I just wanted to clarify, you were saying that the, the layout of Greenfield Road, you felt that that encroached on Elm? Or could you just, I'm just trying to figure out like...
The property owners on both sides of Greenfield Lane, meaning on the street, on the far side, the cemetery side, their property descriptions call their frontage Greenfield Lane. All the homeowners that own property on this side of, of Greenfield Lane, their property descriptions say they abounded on that direction by, by Greenfield Lane.
So roughly, how far are like from the center of Greenfield Lane to the center of Elm Park? I mean, like on this little locust map, it doesn't look very far.
It varies. Because it's kind of a horseshoe, in a horseshoe shape. At the, at the greatest distance, I would say 60 feet, 70 feet.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd say maybe like what?
The town, the town maintains the grass and mows the grass on that green park.
The little area in between.
The park.
It's like a median.
And if they, they even, they would, when, nobody really could figure out or find anything specifically saying or discussing green Elm Park. It's a project they, we're going to put Paul Scott on. But Paul, to the best of my knowledge, even Paul couldn't find anything as to what it is, so.
What are the street addresses of the people on Elm Park?
The mailing address is our Elm Park.
Yeah, Elm, Elm Park isn't in the street list anywhere.
Nope.
But it is an address.
Yeah, but that doesn't mean anything in terms, it's like Northley Farm Road is an address too, but that doesn't make your road a public road?
Oh, no.
So it's the same as this?
Okay. Oh, so you're saying, I thought you meant it just doesn't appear in any records anywhere.
Well, there's a formal street list for the town. That if a road is a public road, it's supposed to be on that list.
Oh, okay.
And there are a lot of private roads on that list also. So I guess you all have to just decide what...
And, and I'm sorry, the lot in question that's closing is Lot 1 or Lot 2?
The house lot.
Lot 3, I think.
Oh, Lot 3. That wasn't one of the above options.
So, excuse me, Richard. If the frontage is on Elm Park, the frontage is not illusionary then, is it?
It's not that it's illusionary. It's whether it's on one of the roads that meets the definition for a Form A. So if it's public, if it's private and you believe it has all the qualities necessary for access for regular and emergency vehicles, or it's on a subdivision plan. And it's, it's, doesn't seem to be public. It's clearly not on a subdivision plan. So then I, I think that it's private, but...
Regardless of public or private, would these lots, these 50-foot frontage lots, be considered frontage, whether it's private or public?
It depends on the quality of the road and the access. And that's a decision that you have to make.
Is Mary Fagan on one side, is that Elm Park? And the people on the other side?
Sarah Norris.
Yeah, those are Elm Park.
Those are Elm Park.
Well, I mean, you, you can just decide on the basis of that, you know, that it's adequate. But, you know, you may want to look at it a little deeper. It's really up to you.
And the Planning Board has previously, this is the second potential development of this property into more than one lot. And they received Planning Board approval for previous incarnation of how they were wanting to potentially sell another lot off and receive the Form A endorsement of 10 years ago.
Yeah, it was in 2000.
For 2000.
Actually, here's something that, that might help. This is the accessories map. And it shows, this is Greenfield Lane formerly called Highland Street.
Oh, interesting.
And Elm Park's over here.
Right.
And, you know, you can see from the way it's drawn that it's not drawn like a street. It's, you know, it's just drawn like a, you know, sort of like a path or a driveway.
One other thing I can tell you is two weeks ago, Mr. Jensen fell getting into his house and broke his hip. And once the ambulance was able to get to him, he rushed him to South Shore Hospital.
Well, I think probably the house on Lot 3, and that's fairly old?
Uh, 1700s.
Okay. So probably what happened was in the course of human events, that was the car path that ran in front of that house. And then as time went by, lots were sold off on either side as time went by. Because the houses on either side, are they old as well?
Um, some are. The most recent was built, I'm going to say around 2000. And that received Form A approval as well.
I think that was the last Form A.
Yeah.
Right, well...
So there is a precedence.
There is a precedent.
I don't have a problem with it.
I don't have a problem with it. I really don't.
And just one last question, like, we're not stating by making a decision, we're not stating whether we feel it's a public or private, or?
Well, we basically are, yeah. You're, you're saying that it meets one of the, one of the, I mean, I, I don't want to get into a discussion that's going to make it more difficult for you all. But I think you need to have, in your mind, something that says why you think this qualifies as a Form A plan. So, you know, whatever that is.
I think it's accessible. It appears to be accessible. I will go on record as saying I don't like 50-foot frontages with houses built in back. I don't care for them at all. But regardless, zoning has given you your relief, have they not?
Yes.
Okay.
Filed?
The decision was filed, yes.
Okay. So, no, it's not. We, we were told it wasn't.
The decision was filed the day before Thanksgiving.
It was voted.
It was voted, but it wasn't, it wasn't drafted yet.
The decision...
Do you have it?
Not with me, but Annie told me it was filed the day before Thanksgiving.
Yeah, well, anyway, who, who knows? We were told that it, that it had not been filed.
That's just whether he can build on the lots and not build on the lots.
Well, Form A is, you know, whether you can, it meets zoning or not is immaterial.
Yeah, it's, it's all about the frontage and the access.
That's right. That's right. So it's, you know, we endorse this Form A, doesn't mean that you can in reality build upon it. So what's the diff? What, what, am I missing anything here?
But it does, it does sound like though that it was going to be endorsed.
Yes.
So?
So I have no problem.
Robert, recognition, Kim and Lee.
I'm sorry about that. I do apologize.
You are forgiven. You don't have to...
I'm familiar with this, you know, through seeing it at other venues. I, I really don't have a problem either. You know, I think this is, what's shown here is, is clearly, you know, a, a way to get past some of the language that you might otherwise need to get past, but it's completely unnecessary.
What? Sorry, I don't think any of us understood.
I think I'll just take that as a yes.
Okay.
I guess, I guess what I'm saying is I have no problem.
Are you explaining this, this rat tail?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Because that was one of the questions I was asked.
I don't like that rat tail. Why is that bad?
Why is it there? What is it?
I thought actually that, that, that was the subject of the discussion.
No.
I apologize for coming in late.
The purpose of the rat tail is...
I realize you can't have two 50-foot frontage lots that are contiguous.
Well, you can, but you just can't get them at the same time.
Ah, interesting, okay.
You can't get them at the same time, but they have to be serviced by a common driveway if they're approved at the same time. So if you put the rat tail in, you can get them both approved. Because they don't abut, you don't have to build a common driveway.
And what is that, two feet wide?
Yes.
I love it.
You've always hated those things.
Well, you have no idea.
You can change zoning to do away with the regulation that if they're approved at the same time, you have to serve with a common driveway. You won't see those rat tails anymore.
That seems a little...
Put in the bylaw, there's always a way around it.
Obviously.
I gotta apologize for not understanding that, that finer points of that situation. But at any rate, I have no problem with approving the lots.
Mike, is there, is there any documentation of this house being sold that, that the, the address used to be or was Greenfield Lane, or?
No, but the property description...
That, that's what I was wanting, but the town maintains that swath of green in between. Yeah, no, I'm familiar. I've been up there. I went to the estate sale of the barn. The barn's beautiful. And that's always just, I don't know, we've just always called it Elm Park. I didn't know that, you know, this is all new to me. I guess it's been there probably as long as the, the original house, so...
Yeah, and I, I don't know, Bob, on that, but what I did look at were the abutting pieces of property and what their, their boundary line is called on that end. And they're all Greenfield Lane.
And then I was just curious about this stone wall that's, that's up there is, obviously that's going to need to be removed. I don't know who makes the call if that's historic or doesn't matter.
It's not a scenic road.
It's, that, that's what it was, yeah. We're trying to even determine if it is a road.
But it's not on the road.
Yeah, no, no, no.
So therefore...
Not within the roadway.
It's not, yeah.
Yeah.
Correct.
Anything else from the board? Anything from the public?
Would you like a motion? We have a motion. Okay. It's a little...
I'm looking to endorse as approval under the subdivision control law not required a plan of land 11 Elm Park, Sichewett, Mass, showing a division of parcels 54, 125 and 25. A prepared by Cabanaro Consulting for the Lund A Jensen revised dated 11/2015. As the division of the tract of land shown is not a subdivision because every lot shown on the plan has frontage of at least the distance presently required by the zoning, Sichewett zoning bylaw on the public way of Elm Park parentheses Greenfield Lane when the 50-foot frontage special permit approved by the ZBA is recorded. The plan shall be held in escrow by the town planner until proof of the recording of the ZBA special permit is furnished.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Yeah, I agree with you. I'm trying to look at this in like a better way.
And for reason you want to condition it on the ZBA decision?
We do them all that way. We've been doing them that way for a couple of years now. Because you really don't have the frontage until those 50-foot frontage lots are really approved.
It's not a condition of the Form A, it's a condition of the being released.
The only thing with what the appeal does is grants a special permit to construct on a lot that has less than 100 feet of frontage and more than 50. So they have nothing to do with the creation of the lot itself. It's just whether he can build a house on it or not. I don't think you can condition a Form A plan. You're only endorsing it.
It's not conditioning the plan, it's just conditioning the release of the plan. It's just part of the boat, that's all. And if you, if everybody wants, I can make a phone call to town council and find out as far as that 50-foot frontage and exactly where that falls in the Planning Board's skull.
I'll sign it. Yeah. I was on the phone with them today, selling them, they watered.
I'd like to be able to report this.
As long as it's filed with the registry, I mean, you bring something stamped from the registry.
Yeah.
Stamped from the registry, not the town clerk, but the registry.
It's hard to get to, you can...
Yeah, you can see it, yeah.
I can read the section for you if you want. It's pretty simple. 50-foot frontage lots, it shall be permissible by special permit granted by the Board of Appeals to erect a single-family detached dwelling on a lot which abuts on at least one street or way for a distance of 50 feet and which has a width of 50 feet, at least 50 feet between every point between the frontage street and the way in the nearest part of the dwelling erected on. There's nothing about the creation of a lot that has to do with the zoning Board of Appeals. So it's just, they give you the permission to build on the lot once the Planning Board creates the lot.
I think we're talking about frontage. I'd be happy to talk to town council about it the next time I have to call him about anything and just, you know, go with whatever he says.
Yeah, I mean, if you, if it's already signed and it's filed, then just come in, you get to pick up your Form A and off you go.
Do you know it's filed?
Yeah, that makes sense, that's easy.
And it was filed?
With the town clerk? It's filed with the town clerk.
Not with the town clerk, but I think what we're talking about is filed with the registry.
It's reported at the registry. The decision, the appeal period runs Monday till Monday. And that's why we're closing on Tuesday. And the hope was to record the Form A tomorrow so that the deed for the existing single-family dwelling can have the recording information of the plan on the deed rather than, say, the court here with. And the other reason we scheduled the closing for that date was, you know, you never know when you bring anything to the registry, whether they're going to question something and delay us a day, so. Frankly, it's for, it's for the property owner's convenience in selling this house that we were hoping to record the Form H tomorrow. And I was unaware that, that the, the plan would be Alvin Escrow. Because I've never seen that before, but anyway.
Yeah, we've been doing that on Rosso. With all the recent ones, where the, where the 50-foot lots are involved. But it hasn't been a problem.
We'll do what we need to, with what you request us to do.
Okay.
And we appreciate the vote.
Okay, thank you.
See, at any rate, I'll sign it tonight so you can swing in and pick up what you want. Next item on the agenda?
So, I'm, I'm sorry, just to be clear, we're going to do what you just voted, which is hang on to this until we get the recorded, the recording information.
He's going to come in tomorrow, show you that it's recorded and you're going to release it?
No, I won't have that till Monday.
He's not going to have that.
Okay.
Appeal has to be up before you got that.
Okay. They get it on Monday. I'll still sign it tonight.
We can do it, if, if you go to the registry first thing Monday, we'll be happy to give it to you just as soon as you come by.
I'll come by, I'll get the, the registry that day, so.
And I'll even wave the coffee and donut. Anyway.
Okay.
Bell set? Next item is the consulting engineer review to complete construction in Kimberly Estates subdivision. How are you, sir?
Good.
You want to tell us what, what's transpired in your life since, since your last meeting and then we'll have Laura do the same?
Would you be kind enough to move the, um, thank you, sir.
So Kevin Kenny live at 13 Kimberly Road. I'm basically waiting for the board to take action. We met a few weeks ago to talk about the fact that the road was never finished, never got to the point where, with the acceptance. I was particularly requesting the walkway that runs from my property that be addressed as well. I understand from the Planning Board that they made a decision to, well, at that meeting it was decided to go forward and approach the builder to get him to comply with completing the neighborhood. He still owns two lots, but they're unbuildable at the end of Windward. And basically, I've reached out to most of the residents and we're all anxious to see it move forward so that the road can get to the point where it can be accepted. And I guess the step that's been taken so far is to contact a consulting engineer to see if they will, and see if the board will fund that to get the documentation of what it would take to get the roads from where they are now to the point of being accepted.
Laura?
Um, we've been told some conflicting information about what remains to be done with the road. There's one school of thought that there's no top coat that was ever put on the road. There's another school of thought that maybe there is a top coat. I think regardless, it's probably going to take more than just the surety to finish those roads so they can be accepted. I think there probably is going to be some, you know, betterment or some payment that all the residents are going to have to make. So hopefully, they're willing to do that. But in the meantime, it's not extremely expensive to get, and to get an assessment of everything that is remaining with the road.
So, but on that point, the, the board would be approaching the builder to try to get them to pay the fees associated with the completion of the road before you ask the residents to do so. Isn't that right? I mean, it's the builder's responsibility...
No, I'm not, I'm not really, I don't think I'm really on the same page. And I don't know if it, I'd recommend to the board to be on that page because what Kevin Cafferty told me needs to be done is, he thinks that the, the base of the road wasn't necessarily put down properly and it's going to need to be all like, um, ground up and, um, laid down again. So I think there's a lot of work that needs to be done with those roads.
Yeah, I would think so.
There's some cracking, there may be some frost heaves, you know, he thinks that, you know, whatever the base was, is, wasn't thick enough, so...
But I guess that my point is, isn't it the builder's responsibility to finish that and isn't the Planning Board's responsibility to ask the builder to complete that?
Well, I think that's definitely a step that's, that's part of this. But the problem is that, that by itself won't complete the roads and, you know, it's not going to make a lot of sense for you to have like 50 feet of road done because you won't finish the road. The town's not going to accept that. I think it has to be where everybody's all in on this, or they're not. And that's why I was hoping that, you know, you'd have an opportunity to go and talk to, you know, the rest of the residents there and get some feeling for whether or not they would be, you know, what their commitment is on... not they would be, you know, what their commitment is on it.
The way I've explained it based on conversations is that there was an engineer going to prepare a plan, whether it was the town one or the consulting one, and see what was necessary to get the roads to the point where the development was considered finished. And that it would be the responsibility of the builder to, to do that, you know, on, on the surface. And the planning board, we request the builder to do that, you know, complete the project that was approved based on our guidelines. If that didn't happen, then what was available is the $70,000 or so that was the cash surety and then a decision would have to be made by the residents to then approve the work to be done and then maybe a betterment assessed to them. But I thought the first step would be to ask the builder to do the work.
Okay, I think, I think maybe we're going to need another, I'm going to need another phone call to town council because what we want is not for the town to have to pay, you know, this $1,600 for this assessment. I think we want Mr. Matthews to pay for that. And he, I've talked to him, he's in Florida, apparently he's got a son who's taken over some of the business and we, we know he's in this area. I don't think we found an exact address for him, but I have a phone number and address for, you know, the older Mr. Matthews. So I think that's where we're going to look for that $1,600 from. And see, you know, see where that goes. I guess the motion that we have, which is to use planning board funds with that, um, I don't know, maybe we want, we want to do that as a backup if, if, um, yeah, and, and maybe we need to just elaborate on this a little bit, that, um, that we're going to seek to get these funds reimbursed from the, from the developer's surety.
Can you take me back for a minute?
Sure.
How much money do we have that's being held by the town for?
It's like 70,000.
69, 69,000.
Okay. How much is it going to cost to complete the road?
We don't know. We, we, we need an engineer to figure that out. But, but it's going to be probably, I don't know, maybe like double that.
Okay. It's two, you know, it's two roads, it's, I think it probably would be that, just the walkway was $5,000, never mind the rest of the work that had to be done.
Yeah, I mean, double's probably very conservative.
So you were saying it's going to cost 140?
Yes, well, I, I really don't know, but when I talked to Kevin about this and I told him that we had 70, he said that's, you know, that's not going to be anywhere near enough. So I'm just, I'm really pulling the doubling out of thin air. I don't know if it's going to be double or triple or what, but it's going to be significantly more.
Point is, it's going to be more than the 70?
Yeah.
Okay. What's the incentive that's going, you're going to offer the builder to come have, have him come back up and put $70,000 into the roadway?
Get rid of the responsibility for maintaining that road.
But he's not maintaining it now.
I, I know, but.
He hasn't maintained it ever.
I, I, I don't think he's going to feel a lot of obligation to do anything. I think we're just, we have to go through.
I'd be very surprised if he came up and said, "There's, you know, me too."
No, it's not happening. I think we have to go through the motions.
I understand.
To ask.
Yes.
And, you know, when he says, "I don't care what you do," you know, then we go on to the next step.
Okay. And the $1,600 buys me just an, an analysis of what has to be done?
Yeah, and, and an estimate.
Okay, that can't be done by DPW?
They would not do it. They said they, they couldn't, they said all their people were just out straight and they couldn't do it.
And we can't take that money out of surety?
We can't take it directly out of there, but I'm thinking, you know, we should, I, I want to add a little bit of language to this motion about, you know, the planning board will seek to have these funds reimbursed from the developer's surety.
That would make sense.
I mean, you could even condition it that if the road construction is found to be deficient, which we know it is, but if it's found to be deficient by the engineering review, then that allows us to, to reclaim that, that cost out of surety.
Yep. Okay, so the planning board.
Isn't that covered in the, the planning board's subdivision bylaws? Doesn't it, I thought I read that it explains this process that says if the builder has, hasn't completed it, a study will be done to make sure the work is complete, the, the builder will be asked to do that, is, isn't, I thought I read that all in the current?
That's the right process, you're spot on. I think the difference is the fact, the difference is the $70,000.
He's not, well, the 70,000, he's not active.
When we came back up and when the escrow was established, money to be held, it was an, an accurate amount of money.
Right.
And there's no further sort of, anything to hold over him if, if that's, if that's the right word?
I think he sold, he owns a, he's got two lots that are unbuildable and he pays, he pays taxes on them every year, a small amount. He just sold the last lot that's not built on Kimberly, I think, a couple of years ago.
Yeah. So, and those lots have all been released, so that might, you know, in a new subdivision, if this were all kind of condensed and combined?
Well, yeah, I did a little research of looking at corporations under his name and probably 10, 12, it's all these limited partnerships of each development has, has its own. And so once that's kind of, I think it puts, you know, a little bit in the bind because I'm sure all his assets associated with this development is a $70,000 in those two lots, everything else is almost non-existent.
Somewhere else, right?
Yeah.
Typically, the leverage that we've got is that we're holding 50 and he needs 30 so that he gets his 20 back if he dispenses the 30.
Right, which was part of it on work back in 1990, maybe.
In this, this case.
No.
We're not only, we're asking to spend the 70, we're also having to spend another 70 or some variation of that.
Right.
And the motion does what for us? Just determines how much, how much the bottom line is?
Uh, yeah, it, it, yeah.
It authorizes the engineering review, right?
Which is the point that we need.
Yeah, with future potential reimbursement from the surety.
So I need to know how much money we're, we're playing with?
How much is in the surety or how much, how much the?
How much money we need to play with?
Yeah.
Does this include fixing the walkway?
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Because that's how this all started, was the walkway.
That would have been real tragedy.
We're not leaving that out, yeah. Okay, but I mean, that's how all of this transit started and then it went, sort of segued into, let's make these public waves.
Okay, and the, the motion's going to be wordsmith such that, that to the extent that they go forward, we're going to get the $1,600 back?
Yeah.
Right.
Otherwise, we put lipstick on it and kiss it goodbye.
Okay.
Be right there.
It's on TV.
I want to know what the official term was.
TV, TVA.
Okay, ah, thank yous. Okay.
Okay, let's try to, try to motion and see what we got.
Okay, I move to use $1,600 for Amory Engineers PC to prepare an estimate of cost to complete construction of Kimberly Estates and provide the estimate to the board. This work includes review of planning board files, a site visit, and possible coring of the roadway and walks to determine whether binder and wearing courses have been installed. The planning board will, uh.
Seek.
Oh, seek first to have the.
Developer?
No, developer provide these funds or trade?
Check.
Or take? I'm sorry. Take new from the remaining surety.
Take them.
Oh, take them?
Take funds.
Yep.
Take funds from the remaining surety.
Second.
Wait a minute, I think all things need to be changed.
Can I ask, oh, one, so it will be looking at the current spec, right? So what, the, the law has changed, it used to be one and a half inch base, one and a half inch topcoat, now it's one and a half inch and two inch. So the, the estimate would be based on the current spec to get the road approved, right?
Actually, no, it's not going to be. It's going to be comparing back to the old specs because you couldn't expect the developer to know what the new specs were going to be, you know, 20 years later.
Well, but it'll be good to know what the differential is there.
I, I think this will really help you with your estimate, but your estimate's going to be different.
So as part of this though, can we get the engineer to specify that if he's going to come up with a cost, that this amount of money would take to get it up to the 1980 criteria of one and a half base, one and a half topcoat? And this is the cost if the, if the developer came to the board today to get it approved for acceptance? I think that's what we're, we need to know.
Well, if it's, I think it's, it should be doable to ask him how much more it would cost, you know, to, to do that and.
And I think it should be in the report because otherwise how do we?
But, but the planning board doesn't really have the ability to do that. I mean, if you, if you want, I don't mind asking him how much more it would cost him to look at what the current specs are, but I, I think the town may do that themselves. This is just to go and get the surety, which is something that's going to contribute and reduce the costs for all the people who live there.
Yeah, what he's on the hook for is to come back up and bring it up to the standard that existed when he built it.
Right.
That's what he, that's his obligation.
So.
Then after that, if, when it goes to street acceptance, then they would come back up and the town would need to make a determination of what it would need to be, what would be required to bring it up to current standards.
But would the builder normally not come forward to get the street accepted?
There's no requirement that they do that.
No, you get some people, some of them will come in as soon as, as soon as the pavement is, 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 is topcoat's in, they come in looking forward to be accepted.
Okay.
Some of them just linger out there forever.
But it does seem reasonable, if the engineer's looking at it to, I mean, how much more does it take or how much more effort does it take to look at the, the two standards? Maybe there, maybe quite a bit, I don't know.
It's fine, but it's, it's just not part of what we're doing. I mean, we may be able to get everybody in a room and, and sort this out.
If I've got him out there and he's doing coring, then it, it wouldn't take, I mean, it's a mathematical exercise to figure out whether it's another half inch of pavement.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's a year of cost, it's per ton.
Right, to go through all this effort and say, "Oh, yeah, but that's not going to get your road accepted," I, it seems like we're going.
Then I need somebody else for $1,600.
That's not really the planning board's job though, I mean, but, but I think this will get you like 90% towards where, where you need to go.
Okay.
I guess, just walking through this though, I understand, let's say this, this particular engineering review, right, gets it to 1980 standards.
Yep.
Okay, then let's just say we, we follow through theoretically that the builder says, "No, I don't care," so we, we use the surety and it's $70,000, right? So then we need to know, okay, what's the difference between 70,000 and whatever it's going to take to get it up to 19, 1890, to 2015 standards?
Yeah.
And then at that point, theoretically, you'd send another engineer out to figure it out, that just seems.
I don't think you're going to need to send another engineer out. I think you're going to look at, okay, the standard then was an inch and a half, now it's two inches, what's the difference in the cost going to be based on the numbers that he has? I think it's that.
I just wanted to make sure that it wasn't like two engineering reviews, that didn't? No.
No, I don't think it's going to be any like that.
It's a mathematical exercise, but, okay, but I, I guess a couple of changes I'd like to make is, one is to, to prove the use of $1,600 of available planning board funds to prepare an estimate of cost to complete the construction of Kimberly Estates and to provide an estimate to the board of what it would bring, would be the, the current standards as well as the, the previous standard when it was built.
Okay, I, I think you can't really ask for an estimate to bring it up to current standards.
Why not?
Well, I, I think it's, you know, as a use of public funds, I just don't think that there's a justification for it. Wait a minute. Because the surety can't be used for that.
Are you in front of street acceptance, looking for an acceptance?
No. It would fail without walking in the door based on where it is.
Yeah, I, I.
I, I liked the beginning part though.
Do we need to clarify that we're talking about, it says to finish Kimberly Estates, we need to say the road and the walkway?
It does say the walkway in this.
It, it does, okay.
And we'll include the walkway in there, just so that's really clear.
So in a perfect world, the steps to take would be analyze this, go to the developer, say, "You've got to bring this up to the level that your drawings showed when the development was approved." He says, "Fine," he comes in, puts down an inch and a half of base, an inch and a half of top, and leaves. He's, his commitment is now discharged. Then, street acceptance looks at it or the DPW looks at it and says, "Well, no, we still can't accept the street because it really needs to have a two-inch topcoat." So there's a second round of construction, if you will, to add that half inch and that's in for by the homeowners.
I, I think, I'm, I'm on the same page except that I don't think it's going to be done in two.
No, no, this is very theoretical.
Two steps, but it's, it's going to be that.
The responsibility is in two stages, if you will.
Yeah, I think the, the engineer's going to say, "Okay, the inch and a half," um, well, he may say that the, the, you know, $69,000 doesn't even pay to bring it back.
Right.
Um, and then the homeowners are going to have to chip in whatever the difference is between that $69,000 and bringing it up to today's standards. And, and somewhere in there, I think the homeowners are going to have to pay for some of that engineering work.
So can I ask this other question later? So if he just sold the last piece of property two years ago, so he, until that point, he still had ownership and still owns two lots. If he's then was saying, "Okay, it's now done and it's now in 2012," when he eventually signs off, is he signing off to the spec back in 1983 or is he signing off to the spec in 2012?
Spec when he built it.
Even though he still was involved, okay. So as, as the planning board changed its specs, it doesn't necessarily affect him before that goes, okay?
It was approved back in 83 or 88 or 93, whatever it was, and, you know, that's what he's required to do.
Okay.
And, and the other change that I wanted to make is to come back up and provide the estimate to the board as well as the DPW. I think I can use public funds as your actual report.
Okay. Okay, let me just try that.
I'll put it in there for you.
Oh, okay, okay.
The whole sun's in the DPW?
Yeah, yeah, I can, you know, with like three magnifying glasses, I can read that. I can read that.
It doesn't change whether you use two magnifying glasses.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Still says the same thing.
Okay.
Okay.
So.
So we can do that and once this is voted, we can expect him to go out shortly?
Yeah, I think he'll go right out.
Who's doing it, Pat?
Pat.
Could I be notified when that's going to take place, so somebody from the neighborhood could be along for the ride?
Um, usually I think they, they like to just kind of go out on their own because it just ups the cost if they have to answer a lot of questions.
Can I ask?
Sorry?
What if I don't ask questions?
We'll, we'll work something out, we'll, we'll be in touch.
So I have a motion that's been modified, all those, discussion, I need a second.
Second.
Discussion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Moving along the process.
You didn't realize, you didn't realize how big of a problem you had when you came in with this little sidewalk?
Uh, no. I was just going to rip it up, but this wasn't the right thing to do, so, thank you.
All right, thanks. Good to see you again. Okay, where are we?
Update Stormwater.
Stormwater by law.
Okay. Um, I really was just going to give the board an update on the process without, you know, a real update on the content. And the process is that we've met now twice with Steve, Mark Winchester, Greg Morse, Josh Bowes from Merrill, who's your consulting engineer, Pat Galvin, and myself. And I think we're making a lot of progress. The only thing I think that we're all aware of is that there are some changes that are going to be in the bylaw, but then there are other changes that are going to have to be in the regulations. And I think we're almost at a stopping point with the bylaw. We're almost like ready to, you know, sort of hand it around to, it's gone around to different departments and it went to Tricia. Tricia had some word changes she wanted to make, which I haven't incorporated yet. Tricia had some word changes she wanted to make, which I haven't incorporated yet. And, you know, there'll be a new draft shortly. So, I think we're still on track, very much on track for town meeting. And we... I think everybody had agreed that we would send it out to North-South River Watershed and the Water Resource Committee, as well as the other two consulting engineers, and get feedback from them. So, we're, you know, about ready to do that. We do have some of the plan requirements spelled out better, which I think is gonna help everybody know what they have to do. It's more... It's more clear that everything really has to be prepared by an engineer. I think at the beginning, we were hoping that somehow you wouldn't have to need to hire an engineer to do this, but when you're talking about, you know, volumes of water and what they are, and how to contain them, I mean, I think an engineer is really, you know, the only... The only way to go. But, you know, again, the devil is in the details. We're still talking about what storms and, you know, exactly how we're gonna be analyzing stormwater, whether we're gonna look at... We did all get on the same page, that we wanted to have the discharge volume, as well as the discharge rate, be one of the things that is regulated. So, I think in most ways, we're really on the same page. Things are moving along really nicely, and, you know, I'm hopeful that it's gonna stay that way, and we can all kinda be, you know...
Change is mutually exclusive, whether there's bylaw, whether there's regulation?
I'm sorry, what change being mutually exclusive?
The bylaw, in other words, are they dependent on each other, or can we make changes?
I think the regulations depend on the bylaw. So, if... I think you can't go outside of the framework of the bylaw. Like, you can't add that you're gonna regulate, say, discharge volume, if you don't have it in the bylaw. I think you need it in the bylaw.
Okay. So, in other words, they have to go together, then?
I don't think you're gonna have them both... I'm not sure you're gonna have them both ready for town meeting. I think, you know, ideally, we'll try to do that, and we... I think everyone wants to get the bylaw through town meeting. But, yeah, they have to... They have to work together.
What's the deadline again on the bylaw? December?
Well, the warrant is closing... It was December 22nd, but they changed the...
21st.
It's the 21st. It's the next selectman's meeting. We've already asked for space for both the bylaw, and there's a piece of the general bylaws called the non... Well, it's called the criminal and noncriminal disposition, but it allows you to give, like, tickets to people that violate the bylaw, and there's a fine, but it's a way... It's not something you go out and do immediately. It's something that you tell people you're gonna do if they don't do what they're supposed to do.
So, if the bylaw goes in front of town meeting without the regulations, that means the existing regulations remain in force until they can go in front of town meeting. And I take it, then, there's no changes that you're thinking about for the bylaw that are going to conflict with the existing regulations during that interim period, where they haven't caught up with each other?
Well, the regulations you can adopt. So, the regulations are subject to the planning board.
Thank you.
So, it's much easier, you can, you know, you still wanna advertise that you're holding a public hearing on them and what the changes are, but you all can adopt those.
And how does that come into effect, then? We have a public hearing, we vote for changes in the regulations. As soon as the vote's taken and recorded, the regulations are changed?
Subject to.
Subject to.
Subject to...
What?
Town meeting approval of the bylaw.
Oh, right.
Oh, yeah. Well, he props my eye after.
The bylaws are already approved.
But, I mean, the changes on the bylaw.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Understood.
Yeah, I think as soon as you vote...
The existing bylaw, we change it to add the definitions that you need, which make a determination if it affects 100-year storms, or lot size, or whatever. That gives us the framework at which, then, at that point, on a public hearing basis, we can adopt the regulations.
Okay. So, for instance, a regulation is which storm event you use as a criterion?
Yeah.
And we can decide whether that's 150, 25, whatever.
Yeah.
That's a planning board decision?
Yeah.
After a public hearing process?
Yeah.
Agreed. And it's gonna be done... When's the next meeting?
The next meeting of the stormwater group is next Monday, and the next planning board meeting is the 17th.
Okay.
So, I think we'll go into a lot more depth at the next planning board meeting.
That's good. Steve appreciates that.
Well, as I say, we'll be getting into... The group that's meeting will be getting into the regulations with the engineers probably at the next meeting, 'cause the bylaw itself is pretty much ready to come back to you guys, I think. And that's the reason why I come in tonight, was just, I wanna see you guys get involved as quick as you can. You know, if it's going out to all these other committees and all that, it's gonna be your article to bring forward, so you really should know the context of what's in there, I think. It's important, 'cause you guys may have changes that you want that should probably take place before it goes to Water Study Committee and all these other places. You guys should make sure that you're comfortable with what these changes are, 'cause you're gonna bring them forward. So, I would just suggest you bring... Get the information.
Yeah, as I've been working directly with Tricia, because she wanted some changes.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, when those are made, you know, I'm... I'm ready to go with the changes that we all talked about the last time, but she wanted me to, you know, talk to her first, so I did.
And that's fine, if Tricia wants to chine in on it, but my only comment is, if it's gonna start going around to everybody else, and you guys might wanna make some changes to what we've done as a committee, then you guys should get your stab at it before it goes to everybody else. That's all.
We'll get a shot at it. In what time on Monday?
11:00.
11:00 works.
Oh, good. Okay. Great.
Yeah, I was skeptical. I thought you'd looked at my calendar and figured out when I wasn't available. It's probably just a coincidence.
No, I didn't.
Last thing, he brings coffee and doughnuts.
So, on that regard, so then, the next planning board meeting, will the committee present the bylaw?
Well, I probably will.
Okay.
Just as your liaison.
And my comment is, you should have it ahead of time.
And your staff person.
Yeah.
You should have it ahead of time, before the meeting.
Well, yeah, we'll do the best we can to give them plenty of notice. I mean, this has been a really short turnaround, because it's one meeting, one week after the other.
And again, I appreciate the work that Laura's doing, 'cause I know rewriting it, we kinda do it in the committee, but we're just throwing notes out there and all that. She's gotta come back, on top of everything else that she's doing, and put this together so she can send it back to all of us. So, she's working her tail off, definitely, on this, and I appreciate that. I think everybody that's on that committee appreciates it, because you are getting a lion's share of what has to be done for work.
Yeah.
So, we're trying to make the changes, but we're not sitting at the computer making them all. So, I do appreciate it.
May I ask a question?
Please.
Just a point of clarification. I have section 32050 of the general bylaws, which says, "Under required activities, construction of a new drainage system or alteration of a drainage system serving an area of more than 15,000 square feet of land." And yet, I have an administrative stormwater project review, which is dated 29 April 2010, 40,000 square feet.
No, the administrative is from 15 to 40, so anything over 15...
Well, it says, "For projects which do not alter an area greater than 40,000 square feet, or 15... Or any area with a slope of 15% or greater." I mean, that's what I am reading.
You may be looking at two different things here.
I'm looking at bylaws.
No, I think you've got a good point, and those are just the kind of things that we're trying to... The kind of conflicts that we're trying to get rid of.
Because this is... This is based on this. And this says 40,000 square feet. This says 15.
Okay. In number three, which you're reading on the drainage, okay, if you have a drainage system that's collecting water from an area that's greater than 15,000 square feet, you're altering that, that's different than altering 15,000 square feet. So, when you read number three, the contribution area... So, if you have 10 acres of land leading into a drainage system, and you wanna change that drainage system, it's gonna require a permit. But that's where the 15,000 square feet of contributing area, or contributing area, comes in. So, that's different than the 15,000-square-foot minimum disturbance, which kicks in if you're gonna alter 15,000 square feet.
I think Ann's got a point, because she's looking at the section that says applicability in the regulations, and I think you absolutely have a point. What we're trying to do now is to get the regulations internally consistent, and to say what the group feels collectively they need to say, and to get the feedback from the North-South River and the Water Resources, and to have everything, you know, on the same... Everybody on the same page. But, yeah, we have to get these two sections of documents on the same page, too. We absolutely do.
They have to match. They have to match. And right now, they don't.
They absolutely do. We know that. We know that. But thank you for bringing that up.
It's part of the reasons they exist.
Yeah. So, yeah, no, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay.
You all sent us stormwater?
Yeah. Again, just the faster you guys get it, the happier I'm gonna be, because I'm curious on what your input's gonna be on this as well.
Well, hopefully, you know, the steps that I need to take are to take in what Tricia asked me to do, get that incorporated, get the changes that you all asked for, you know, all melded, and make sure that she understands that we did meet again recently, and that there are more changes. Because one thing that's hard to explain to people, you know, once they put their input in, they're thinking, "Well, that's it. It's done." But it can't be done, because it's kind of a living document right now, and it's still going through this, you know, this process.
Yeah. I think ultimately, you guys are gonna make the decision as to what exactly gets the input changes and not.
And I think...
Planning board article.
I think what I heard the board say they wanted was to have a balance, maybe, you know, I don't think it was coming just from Steve. I think everybody was on the same page with that. Some kind of a balance between, you know, not something that's just what the developers want, and not something that's just what the North-South River and the environmental people want, but some kind of, you know, something that, you know, hopefully meets the needs of both, if that's possible.
Yeah, no, we're getting that, but I'm... Again, my point is just that it's a planning board article, so you guys need to be comfortable with what's in it.
Your point's made.
And that's it. So, I just think the sooner you get it, the better you're gonna have input. That's all.
Okay. The next thing we're gonna have input for is accounting.
Accounting.
Here we go.
Oh, really?
Yeah. We have a whole... Karen did a whole nice motion.
Oh, wow. That's awesome.
There's a lot of bills.
Read the motion instead of reading each bill.
Oh, thank God.
I move to approve the requisition of $216 to Weston Graphics for copying firm, the FIRM maps, $187.50, and $250 to Amory Engineers for zoning map updates, for $125 to Amory Engineers for flood map updates, for $196.48 to Amory Engineers for construction inspection of 53 Colonial Mansfield Drive, for $1,002.50, and $593.75 for the engineering peer review for 13 Ford Place, for $498.65 for construction inspections for White Ash Farm, for $258.96 for engineering peer review for Aquina Path, for $167.45 for construction inspection for 61 Border Street, for $500 for engineering peer review for 15 Linda Lane, for $31.25 for construction inspection for Studley Farm, $437.50 to Amory Engineers for engineering peer review for 46 Tilden Road, for $218.75 to John Tedeschi as a return of unexpected funds for 46 Tilden Road, for $93.75 to Statewide General Remodeling as return of unexpected funds for 15 Linda Lane, for $53.54 to Craig Hoffman as a return of unexpected funds for 53 Colonial Mansfield Drive, $300 to Countryway Real Estate Trust as a return of unexpected application fee due to application withdrawal...
Is that unexpended, by the way?
Yes.
Yep.
Thank you.
Oh, it's in... Oh, you are correct.
We're gonna do a change all at the end.
Yeah, sorry. Unexpended. I said unexpected. Unexpended, thank you.
I'm sure they weren't expecting to get any money back. Once in a while.
If we were throwing deep...
Now, $300 to Countryway Real Estate Trust as a return of unexpended application fee due to application withdrawal, $151.80 to WV Mason for office supplies, and for $125 to Ockers Company for a typewriter maintenance contract?
Yep.
Really?
Marilyn's right. She's been right all these years.
She's still right.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All of them in favor?
Aye.
So, except that 53, 54 is to Kirk Hoffman?
No, it's Craig.
Craig.
Oh, it is Craig. Oh, that's what... Yeah, that's what we said. Okay.
Did I say Kirk?
No, no.
Colonel Yaskiel is a rogue.
Right, Colonel, not Colonial.
Yeah, not Colonial.
Oh, okay. Yeah.
Okay.
Did you say Colonial?
Wait. It's Colonel.
Now, is that obvious, you need to sign every one of those?
Yeah, you have to. There's like, a lot of signing going on here.
Oh, boy. While we're doing that, we got minutes?
Yeah.
We can start some here, and we could start some at that end.
Maybe somebody else... Somebody else can make an option on that.
Oh, sure.
Start signing.
Just sign, like, the top one.
You've got it.
So, shall I make that motion? I move to approve the minutes of November 12, 2015.
A second? Is it the same as it was emailed out? Got a second? All of them in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
So, just flip them this way.
Okay.
So, how many signatures do you need on the minutes?
Oh, just one on the minutes.
No, you're not.
Now, can we listen to the planners' report while we sign?
Well, I guess one of the big activities of this week was the budget, and as you know, I had asked for an assistant planner slash conservation enforcement officer with Pat Gallivan. I think there's still a little bit of hope for somebody who may assist both of our departments in some way, but it may be that it's going to be in a different form from what we originally thought. So, so that's where that's going.
So, Tricia's in favor of that?
Well, she's in favor of, I think, trying to support the departments as best as she can, given that the budget is limited.
But you know what? It takes money to make money.
Well, that's true, too, except we're not making money.
No, no. What we're ending up is, is losing time.
That's true.
And it has, and time is money. And when we don't have enough support staff to do what needs to be done, it pushes everything out further, and there, there's not the time to do enforcement, and then we end up with what could be construed as a mess. We need more help.
We absolutely do.
We need more help, and the sooner we receive this help, the better off we're all going to be. I mean, we're looking at trying to, to put forward 40R. We're looking forward to some zoning changes. We're looking forward to any number of things, along with the possibility of rewriting the master plan because it's been 10 years.
Yep.
So, it, this is an opportunity that, in this particular situation, and I feel very, very obviously strongly about it, that the town is being penny wise and pound foolish.
Nope, those are all, those got three.
Well, I think you're preaching to the choir as far as.
I understand that.
And I don't know, you know, what the best strategy is. I, I need some help from you all because you're the ones who are the elected officials and, yeah, so I, again, I don't know what the best strategy is. So, I mean, if you read the memo that I wrote that I got Pat involved with, I think I took a pretty good shot at it, but it was an initial shot, and all I can say is I think there's still some possibilities there, and I will, you know, do my best to fight for them and to, to get them. But that doesn't mean that, you know, doesn't mean I'm going to prevail, but I will try.
Well, I know it took how many years I had been advocating for many that we get more help in the building department, and now we have Mr. Vogel. But that took a very, very long time to do that.
Yeah.
But it was worth the wait.
Well, it was worth the wait.
Came at the right time, as far as I can see.
This is true, but.
Couldn't have been better.
But we have to, I mean, I forego laptops.
If, how many signatures do you need on this? Three on each of the bills, so.
But I think it's also a sensitive time because, I mean, I totally agree with you, but, you know, we've got the school, we have the fire and safety complex.
You are so right, but along the same lines, we have all of these buildings that are going up that need a certain amount of oversight, that need to be monitored for many different reasons. Where is the help, the staff, to do that? Where is the staff?
Yeah, I, yeah, it's not my.
I mean, I think, I think really this is critical.
Yeah.
Critical. That's my two cents.
I think we'll all look to support it when it's put forward.
Yep. One other piece that Ann's very familiar with, but maybe some others are not, is that the EDC made a presentation to the selectmen Tuesday night on the wayfinding signs, and it was very well received, which was, you know, very gratifying, having done a lot of work on it. But it looks like they're, they've basically agreed with.
Right, endorsed it.
With a uniform system of signs for the whole town, and they're interesting, they're kind of, they've got a catchy slogan, and, you know, you can just kind of wait and see what they're like when they come up.
Actually, I think I showed them to you, did I not?
I've seen some of the drafts. I don't know which one of the, you know, models that you picked. You've seen some material in your office.
Yeah.
You know, I would only say that catchy slogans are great and uniformity is nice, but the most absolutely charming places in the world have grown organically over time and exhibit a fair degree of non-uniformity, and that's my two cents.
Yeah. Well, there's no way all the signs in town are going to be in this, you know, in this design because.
Sure, sure, understood.
You know, it's impossible to do that.
I'm just a little cautious about, about blanketing the entire town with one, one branding stroke, if you would, you know, if you.
Well, it's, it's kind of a philosophical thing, and the EDC, part of their mission is marketing the town so that it's, it's got, you know, it's, it's got a very strong identity already, but just so that identity kind of comes out. So, hopefully, that's what these signs do. I mean, would you agree that's what they're trying to do?
I mean, we're trying to make, we're trying to put Situate more approachable. I mean, there's no sign that says Widow's Walk.
Well, I completely agree.
You know, I mean, right.
You know, all of those ones are good ones.
And so, it will be, I know what you're saying, sometimes it's, it's better to be more eclectic rather than same old, same old.
That's a good word, yeah.
Yes.
Yeah.
I, I fully appreciate what you're saying, and Tricia was really supportive of what EDC is trying to do, so we'll see how it moves forward. I mean, she is ready for us to put together signs, signage, et cetera, to go forward. And we have to start somewhere. We have to start somewhere. And one of the biggest challenges, I think, is to get a sign on, which EDC has nothing to do with, on Route 3 that says Situate's that way.
Oh, right.
There is, there is no sign.
There used to be one on, at the Hanover Mall, I think.
Yeah, and when they did that reconstruction, boom, it went away. And there's one on Route 3A up in Hangum, and that's it.
Right.
So, it's, it's all interesting, and just for an FYI, I am now chairman of the Economic Development Commission.
Congratulations.
Yeah.
It's great.
Yeah.
Of a great unpaid position.
It's a great, great unpaid position, and we have retained Mark Faverman to go forward. What we're trying to do more than anything is to start taking action. I mean, it's one thing to talk about it, it's one thing to have all of these grandiose ideas. It's, in my opinion, it's about small successes and implementation, and we were able to, to bring in the microbrewery thanks to the planning board. We hope to go forward eventually at some point advocating 40R, looking to spiff up or figure out what to do with North Situate, but nothing's going to happen up there until we can get sewer.
Right.
And the chances of that coming anytime soon are slim and none.
Something to work on.
It is definitely something to work on. So, it's, it's an exciting committee. Faverman, who, who deals with a lot of different Ipswich, Sturbridge, and so on, he thinks the committee, maybe he says it to everybody, but he thinks we're wonderful. He loves working with us.
There you go.
So.
Dynamic, was the word he used. He used the word dynamic.
I think, I think you're definitely in a position that's a good one, probably in his eyes because you're ready. You know, this is, this has been kind of brewing for a long time, and now it's ready to boil.
Well, it's time.
Yeah.
It's time. And one of the things we have to keep in mind is the fact that Situate is at the end of the line, and we have to make it more and more of a destination to make people want to come here.
Mm-hmm.
And it's, and it's marketing, and it's any number of things. There's talk about trying to get Chronicle to do something for us at some point.
Yeah.
And that's free.
Yeah.
As opposed to paying.
Was it main streets and back roads, that kind of thing?
Yes, yes.
Kind of outports kind of at the end of the line, too. Those are the people from ago.
No, and Ipswich is at the end, they have more issues than we do. And we have this, this fabulous harbor, there are things that we need to do to really make this place, but we have a sort of, we have the resident, we have a group that wants Situate to remain exactly as it is, and they really don't like people from away. And then we have, we want to attract people from away, from Mills Tax, use everything. There's a, there's a divergence of opinion about what is in the best interest of Situate as a whole, and these are things that we have to shem out. And it is an exciting time.
Yeah, absolutely.
It's a very exciting time. And the other thing, and this has somewhat to do with economic development on the radio this morning, Cutler and Cantwell and one other rep along, along with Ed Perry from WADD, trying to come up with something to encourage people to take the train on weekends because it's been going now for almost a year. The ridership isn't really what it should be on weekends. Perry is willing to spend $50,000 in free advertising to have people ride the train, and this would help Situate in terms of weekends, particularly in the summer, to bring them down for golf, to bring them down for whatever. So, it, that's something that we have to look at.
Unfortunately, I think, this is a, I read the MBTA in general is looking at ways to cut costs, and one of the things is removing all weekend service everywhere, not just, not an old colony, but.
I thought they had a run where they tried to operate without conductors this morning.
They did, actually.
Yeah, they did. So, but, you know, we, if we don't use it, we're going to lose it, and we have to use it, and they have to come up with strategies to ensure that people do use it, and maybe one of the answers would be free parking everywhere on weekends.
Yeah.
I mean, there are things that they need to be creative about.
Speaking of that, do we have any numbers on GATRA? Like, has it been successful, not successful? I have no idea.
He made a present, the executive director made a presentation right before the EDC presentation, and I think he said 5,000 something in the six months that it's been operating.
Mm-hmm.
So, you know, there, there are numbers, the numbers sound good.
Okay.
So, it's only one bus.
And they're trying to figure out, they want to redo the route because there's some frustration. People want to go from point A to point B and not go to C, D, and E. And they, so there's talk about that, and then also to possibly, maybe North Situate, but we won't hold our breath on that one.
Yeah, they were talking about that. One other thing, as far as the planner report, Bob was there at the firm open house.
Oh, yes.
It was, let's see, last week on, what day was it? Thursday.
Right.
From 5:00 to 9:00 PM, Neil, Bob, Pat Gallivan, Nancy Durfee, and I, and Tricia was there, Bill Sheehan was there, the IT director, at the Marshfield Furnace Middle School, and we were really just helping people identify what had happened to their flood zone, what the impacts, to some extent, what the impacts on them were going to be because that's everyone's next question. And then Leslie Fields of the Woods Hole Group was there, who's been doing the appeals, and she gave a very good presentation, and she handled some of the very difficult, pointed questions. She handled them very, very well.
Yeah, she was superb.
Yeah, so, it was, it was a good meeting, it was a good experience.
One other important thing that maybe is worth mentioning here is that now you can go on the town website and actually read the flood map information that's there. If you go to the homepage, and then I believe it's services, online services.
Yep.
And then GIS, and going through that sequence will bring you right to the mapping. Then on the right-hand side of the mapping, there's a series of buttons. The button with a little I in it is the one that says information. And then on the left-hand side, there's another button that says, what is that button that you have to click to get, to get moving into the program? Do you remember? There's only two buttons on the left-hand side.
Yeah.
Fine, I think.
Fine, yeah, the fine button.
You've got to hit the fine button, hit the I, I button on the, on the right-hand side, and then put in your address, and you can, you can go right there.
I think you can put in your last name, too, if you, especially if you've got an uncommon last name.
If you happen to know that.
Yeah, not too many people know their parcel numbers, but.
But, but it is fairly user-friendly. I mean, if I can do it, almost anyone can do it.
Yeah. Yeah.
Anything else before we vote on Bob's motion?
Second.
Next week's meetings at the Maritime Central.
The 17th, huh?
The 17th, the Maritime Central, okay.
And I will not be able to be in attendance. I think I mentioned that to you, but I wasn't sure.
You did.
Where in the world are you going?
San Francisco.
Oh, okay. The tour never stops, huh?
Time never stops.
Going to get him on that bus that drives him round town.